I call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is John Samia and I am the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our August 24th, 2021 Board of Select meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection, in addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30 and 330 and Facebook. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Channels 30, 330 from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on September 14th, 2021. Tonight's meeting will also be available on YouTube starting tomorrow for your viewing enjoyment. First item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we have two sets of minutes, August 10th, 2021, and our workshop on August 11th, 2021, so it's to approve the minutes of both of those dates. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, announcements and reports. Colleagues, any? I don't have anything either, that because tonight we're actually appointing for the various positions, we've talked about the previous two meetings, so we'll get to that later during the meeting. So, next item is, yes?
Actually, I was just thinking, we should probably just extend a quick thank you to the town staff and Selco for their readiness for the hurricane, even though it didn't really pack a punch. I know there were a few power outages that were responded to quickly, and definitely grateful for all that went into making sure that we were prepared.
Oh, great, so thank you, thank you for that. Next item is Town Manager's Report, Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, board members. The bulk of my report this evening, I would like to review the preliminary results, or the results of the 2020 census with the data that we have on hand. But before I get there, I just wanted to share with the public and remind the board of the process that we will be going through over the next 30 or 45 days to establish priorities for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, of which we've received our entire first tranche of 50% of the funding, which brings us to a little over $5,750,000. We do anticipate receiving the full $11.5 million over, between now and next August. In order to prioritize and spend those dollars as effectively and thoughtfully as possible, we've issued preliminary guidance to all department, town departments, for them to begin to review the eligibility criteria and develop program and project applications. We are going to open the program and project application progress, starting on August 30th. And with the information that we have on hand, departments will be able to indicate their best and brightest ideas for projects within the four primary categories for spending the funding. After all departments have had roughly 30 days to submit their requests, an internal team will work to rank and make recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. We'll provide the Board of Selectmen the total list of projects and the prioritized and ranked list, and then we'll work with the board to make final funding decisions for the first round of funding, leaving sufficient flexibility within that plan in order to continue to respond to the ongoing needs of the pandemic. And we'll develop a separate set of criteria for any funds that we've identified that can be used for revenue loss, which is the area with the greatest flexibility. So that's how I see moving forward into early October, and prioritizing and utilizing those funds for the first year of eligibility for the program, of which we'll have four years to expend those funds. So, final note before I get into the census data, is that we published a request for proposals for the Community Visioning and Strategic Plan process, the middle of last week. As of this afternoon, we've had 22 firms request that document. The next milestone for that project is a pre-proposal conference, which will occur next Wednesday, in a hybrid model, both in this room and virtually. We've had firms pull that RFP from all across the country, including California, Texas, Florida, many firms from New England, Massachusetts, so I'm very excited of level interest to join in that exciting project with us. So, with that, I will begin to show a few slides with the results of the 2020 census for the town of Shrewsbury. Let me get this right on my screen. So, the overall population from 2010 to 2020 grew 7.6% for the town, a little over 3,000 individuals, and very, I think, average growth for the state, very close to the state overall. As we near 40,000 in population, we come to a point where we may need to add an additional voting precinct. So, the Secretary of State's office is still analyzing whether they're going to require us to add an additional precinct, because at no time can any voting precinct in the Commonwealth have more than 4,000 people within it. So, based upon that growth rate, they will make the determination to add the 11th precinct, or if they'll allow us to continue as we are. Of course, based on the prior 10 years, we would exceed 40,000 within the next 10, and you only change voting districts once every 10 years, so we'll keep the board posted on that. So, I'll move through some of the demographic data that's currently available, from the Secretary of State and the US Census. So, the first thing that we're going to take a look at here is the age. Overall, the categories that have been identified, persons under five years of age, persons under 18 years of age, and persons over 65 years. You can see, within the lower age brackets, we have lost double-digit population, with persons over 65 years old growing by 24%. So, the census data doesn't track those categories in between to get any more granular within that data, but it is very interesting that the very youngest brackets have declined, and the older, oldest bracket that they track has increased quite substantially by 24%. Here's just a comparison of the pie charts of those three age brackets between 2010 and 2020, obviously showing that the population has aged over those 10 years. Very, I think, strikingly and exciting to share that the diversity in the community has increased over the last 10 years quite substantially. Now, the 2020 census data tracked race a little bit different than prior years, in identifying, you know, certain races alone, and then creating category of two or more races alone. So, I think there's a little bit of commentary across the country about how that impacted the overall numbers, but still quite substantially, white alone within the community declined by 17%, black or African alone increased by 14%, and Asian alone increased by 61%, the largest category. Hispanic or Latino, a 56% increase in that 10-year period. And two or more races increased by 63%.
Is that percentage of the whole?
No.
Percentage of?
That's percentage growth.
Yeah, of those various races.
Growth or loss, okay.
Correct. Just looking at the race in itself, comparing it to 2020, 2010. We'll look at the others here in a second. So, here again is the, kind of the pie chart of race alone, and comparison, comparing it to themselves. What I will note on here is that when we look at 2020 versus 2010, white alone has decreased down from 76.2% of the population to 63.3, and our largest growth category, moving from 15.3% to 24.6%, Asian alone as a race is our largest growth category. So, again, a lot of diversity that the largest single race is still white within the community, but it has declined over the last 10 years, and we've become more diverse in almost every other race that's identified through the census. With regards to housing, we've increased housing units from 13,987 to almost 15,000, just shy, so 34 shy of 15,000, 14,966. So, we continue to see strong residential growth within the community. Total housing units, of course, increasing by 7%. Our housing vacancy rate, which is still very small, did increase, it's still within the 4% bracket. I think that's a normal transitional amount within any community when the snapshot of the census is taken, but it did increase by 9% in comparison to what it was in 2010. And here's that chart showing that the vacancy increased to 4.4% from 4.02.
Mr. Mizikar, excuse me, we don't have anything on that housing increase, what's single family and what's multifamily?
Not at this point, no. And we also don't have any data, no data that I've seen has been released, like on income levels or anything like that, at this point in the release. So, I can go through each and any, every chart, kind of detail out things a little bit further, if you're interested. I'll leave the race up here on the screen, that information. Again, significant changes, decrease in individuals of white race, and increasing diversity within the community, which is great, we all see that as we're out and about in the community, but happy to answer any questions you may have about the information on hand so far.
Colleagues, any questions or comment? Mr. Mizikar, one data point that I remember, a few years ago, when I was running, we had a migration of certain age groups out of town, and that'll be interesting to see. Remember, the 25 to 34-year-old age group was, had decreased quite a bit, and if I remember, was the 76 to 80-year-old age group, or 70 to 75, it'll be interesting to see that, as we, and I will be talking about the Affordable Housing Trust, but as we talk about our strategic planning and housing generally, and, you know, how we address and provide opportunities for members of the community. So, the data, as it gets sliced and diced, as it comes out, if we could get additional reports.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Yeah, just, I guess a question observation. It's interesting that the population under five years old went down 17%, but over this period of time, school population stayed even. So, how is that even possible?
It could be a factor of response, right? Like, we've encouraged everyone to do the best that we could, to get everyone to respond. I personally thought the overall population would have grown a little bit more than 7.6%, but again, it's only as good as the data that's submitted, and that's why it's so important for everyone to respond. But, yeah, I guess I don't have a great answer for that otherwise.
Kind of more rhetorical question, I guess, but I just, really? We just built a school because we didn't have enough room, and we got a population that's declining?
Yep.
I don't think so.
Anyone else?
So, just one final point, the town remains the 43rd most populous community within the Commonwealth, so that's where we were in 2010, and we retain that position, so we're in the top 12% of total population by any municipality, where we were in 2010 as well.
Great.
Can I just?
Mr. DePaolo.
Sure.
That cities and towns, right?
Yep. Every, of 351, we're 43.
Right.
Yep.
That's pretty big. I mean, the scale of things, but I gotta go back and look at that and see how that drops off after that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lo.
Just one observation that I think the board needs to be vigilant on, possibly, is we'd be creeping up on, it could affect our state representation, and there may, at some point in time, need to be some advocacy done in what the board thinks is the right way to go. I mean, that's a whole new wrinkle that we've never had to deal with before.
Thank you.
I think that decision's gonna be made by people higher up the.
Oh, absolutely, but, but there's advocacy.
Yeah, we can advocate, but, I don't know, the last census, some of the state senators were trying to grab pots of, they were, they're trying to grab pots of Shrewsbury for their own reasons, and I think even a couple of reps, so it's, I mean, that's the nature of the beast, but.
Something to look at, this time comes up.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Casabian.
Do I recall that we did send a letter, and do we know the timeline for the state to make decisions regarding, I mean, I would assume the testimony period is closed.
Yep.
Advocating to stay one rep, one senator, right?
That's correct.
In Shrewsbury.
Yep, so the board did pen that, given the fact that Shrewsbury's population alone is nearly the ideal size of rep seat within the Commonwealth, and requesting that Shrewsbury as municipality is not fractured as a voting district, so, yeah. But, I, we don't know, we don't know when the, you know, there's still legislation pending regarding who sets voting precincts, whether it's the state first or municipalities, traditionally it's been municipalities, so, and we, again, don't know if we'll have to add a precinct to our town or not at this point.
Any other questions? So, okay. So, we want to go on to COVID-19, the coronavirus COVID-19 report from the Town Manager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just need to switch slide banks here. So, we're providing an update to the board from your last meeting, which was on August 10th. There's been an increase of 71 additional COVID cases since that time, we're now at 3,113 cases since March 19th of 2020, 47 cases within the last seven days, so the seven-day trend is greater than the 14-day trend, I guess. The seven-day trend is greater than the 14-day trend, which is a warning flag, obviously we're having more cases over the last seven days than the last, we would, we would have over 90 cases if this trend continues over that 14-day period. You can see at the chart at the bottom of the screen, we are very much on an upward trend again. We are exceeding daily case counts on average over the last three weeks, that exceed May and April of both 20, excuse me, 2020 and 2021. So, we're almost the whole way back on our average daily case counts to late March, so we're asking everyone to be mindful of that as they make decisions and are out and about. We have instituted a mask requirement for anyone visiting the building, any town buildings, including the senior center and library. We continue to report our weekly cases out to the public every Friday. With regards to vaccination, we still see a continued increase, since your last meeting, there's been 351 additional individuals that have gotten at least one dose and fully vaccinated are up by 285. As a community, I think we're doing very well, 67% of the eligible population is vaccinated, so we're pushing 70%, and hopefully we get there sooner rather than later, and we have some demographics, or some age brackets within there, of course, that have exceeded the age bracket that lags the most, that's eligible, is 20 to 29-year-olds, only 61% of them have been vaccinated, and beyond that, everyone else is at least above 70%. So, we encourage everyone to consider making the choice that they need for themselves for vaccination.
Mr. Mizikar?
Yep.
I'm having a little trouble reading from here. 16 to 19-year-olds, does that say 84%?
84%.
Are fully vaccinated?
Yes.
Wow.
Yep. Thank you.
Any questions? Mrs. Casabian.
To your point, Mr. DePaolo, I wonder if some of that is mandated because you needed to go to college, from the 16 to 19-year-olds, having to have a higher vaccination rate? The other thing I was just reading in the Globe, that we're not getting the same kind of data from the state as we were getting when the case numbers were this high. What are you seeing, and what are we receiving from the state as far as data and breakdowns of, you know, where these cases are coming from, and any sort of trends that we can sort of look at and try to understand why our numbers are so high?
So, we still receive case counts six days a week, Monday through Saturday. We don't receive information on Sunday, but we receive that information in our Monday reports. Those daily case counts illustrated in the graphic, we have seen a marked increase just over the last few days, you know, we're seeing double digits now, it's the first time we've seen double digits anytime since in early May, late April. So, we've had 10, we had 10 cases today, 10 cases between Sunday and Monday, so it's definitely a significant increase. We don't receive the level of data for me to provide any analysis, whether these are multiple people in a single household or a single address, we don't receive that, since there's no longer a state of emergency, and that information is deemed not to be eligible for relief to municipalities. We used to provide that to our public safety members when they're responding, as you know, so, but we don't receive that anymore, so we just get the number on six days a week.
So, basically, our public safety personnel are just going into a home, or, and not, just treating everyone COVID-positive?
Absolutely.
And then, do we know what our positivity rate is now?
I do not know, I haven't seen it, I'd have to go back and look at the Thursday report, but we can get that, yep.
Thank you. So, that is something that's still being included, then?
It is in the state's weekly reporting, as far as I know, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
One question, are we getting data on breakthrough cases?
No.
That is one piece of information that we'll need, I think, hopefully the state provides that, as there's a lot of questions whether or not these, the vaccines are losing their effectiveness, as it relates to even the community, and get that, okay. Any other questions?
Just with regards to the third shot, or the booster, you know, our public safety officials would be eligible for that on the first day that's available, since they were vaccinated in, with their shots, and starting in January, so they would be eligible to get that right away.
Okay, thank you. Good, thank you. So, we go to the next item, under Financial Business, is there American Rescue Plan Act update?
Nothing really beyond where we were, I did note earlier that we have received the 50% of the county allocation, so we've received 50% of everything that we've anticipated at this point, and that's why we're moving forward with the planning process.
Just a quick question on that, is there any difference in terms of how we invest those dollars, short-term treasuries, do they yield any higher rates, or is it pretty much close to zero at this point?
We have them in interest-bearing accounts. They're somewhat very liquid at this point, based on just some general state-bearing interest accounts. Once we make a determination how we're going to spend the funding, and I know how aggressively we'll get rid of it, we can switch it if, if, you know, we're going to plan for a more substantial water and sewer project, it may not break down for the spring, we'll put that in something with a little better interest.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, any questions or comments under ARPA update? Okay. So, I guess we'll go on to New Business, and, thanks, Mr. Mizikar, the new, next item is to review and vote, to call a special town meeting for Monday, October 18th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. In our, in our drive and in our materials, we have a timeline, Mr. Mizikar.
Yes, so, we are looking for the board to make the call for the date and time of the meeting. We haven't settled on a final location, we're working with Public Buildings, the School Department, and Public Health to make that final determination. I'm hoping not to be back in the fieldhouse in a more acoustically appropriate setting, but given the case numbers, we don't want the board to set the location at this point, but we will make that decision, obviously, well in advance of the meeting, when the warrant is signed, which is about a month in advance of town meeting, so I will continue working on that and seeking your counsel. With regards to the general actions that we will look for the board to take for the special town meeting, after calling for it this evening, the board will review the draft warrant at your next meeting. I would anticipate roughly 12 to 15 articles, many are routine business, and we have some zoning articles as well, and the board will ultimately sign the warrant for the special town meeting at your second meeting in September. The Tuesday prior to that meeting, that will be the deadline for citizens petitions, which is Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. And again, we're proposing a special town meeting for October 18th, 2021, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion related to the town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move we establish a date of Monday, October 18th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, location still be, to be determined for a special town meeting.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item, under New Business, is to review an act on the road race request for the 10th Annual Turkey Trot for the Memory Road Race on Thursday, November 24th, 2021, at 8:00 AM, beginning in the vicinity of the First Congregational Church, which is the five-miler, and on the Town Common, which is the two-miler, usually the walking route, and ending at the intersection of Route 140 and Prospect Street. We have the letter from Lozotz and Mr. Heald about this. The one piece that will come is an insurance certificate, I think, is to come to us. Any questions at all? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Chairman, move we approve the request of the Turkey Trot for the memory contingent on receipt of the appropriate insurance document?
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, under New Business, is to review an act on the road race request for the barefoot half marathon on Sunday, September 5th, 2021, at 6:30 AM, beginning in Sterling, Mass, and going through the intersection of Glendale Avenue and Route 70, Clinton Street in Shrewsbury to Holden Street, and ending at Shrewsbury High School Rotary. We have materials, the schedule, the route, the email to town, the police confirmation from Mr. O'Connor, from Officer O'Connor, as well as the school confirmation as well, allowing that for Mr. Collins, and also just additional materials that were on the website related to the purpose of this race, that was on the website, that the race is open to participants, would like to support the remote learning program, that the individual Nat Brier, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing that name incorrectly, is promoting in Haiti, stating that we believe that education should be a way out of poverty, and running barefoot is a symbol of the socioeconomic crisis that third-world countries are facing. So, that is a little more background as well, related to this race. What's the, pleasure of the board, or any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to reappoint a delegate, a delegate, and appoint an alternate delegate to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2022. Colleagues, this was brought to us through correspondence last time. The CM RPC's mission is fourfold, addressing growth and development issues that extend beyond community boundaries, maintaining the district certification for federal transportation improvement funds, providing technical knowledge and resources to assist local government in addressing specific land use, economic, or environmental problems resulting from growth or decline, and building strong working relationships with member communities, state and federal officials, as well as the area's legislative representatives. The planning board has a couple of delegates, and we have one, last year we had a delegate, which was Kathleen Cohen, she's also interested for reappointment, and last time we had an alternate who has not sought to be reappointed as an alternate. So, right now, we have a delegate, I'm not sure if the alternate in the past is gone or needed to go, but in the past, I also know that members of our board have served as an alternate as well, which we could take up at a later meeting if the board so desires. So, if there are any. So, if there are any, not any questions or comments, looking for a motion to approve?
Will the board approve Kathleen Kehoehan as delegate to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for fiscal twenty-two?
Second. Have been moved and seconded. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. DiPaolo?
I think we should try to find an alternate because, sorry, sometimes this is reminding me we're having a meeting.
It's like the clock.
Yeah, great. Yeah. Taking over for the board. Sometimes there are votes that have to be taken. If we don't have an alternate there, we're not going to get a vote.
So, that's something we could vote for?
They only meet once a quarter, I think. Somebody should be able to step up to do that. I mean, we need to right now, but we should.
Or have a board member. I mean, I think we've done both. We could see if there's interest out there as well. It's something we can work through. Okay. No, I agree, we should do an alternate. I don't know how often the alternate is gone, but if it's been never, I mean...
Well, they can go to any of the meetings, but I don't know how many times an alternate has needed to go.
Okay. Let's see if we can get a little more information, and then we can plan accordingly. Okay. So, next item is what we have been talking about in the beginning of each meeting for the last couple of meetings, is to review an act on the appointment of three members to the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees. For terms, they're actually, it says for two-year terms, expiring on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. The way the initial appointment will be is it will be a staggered term, where the initial, one individual will have a two-year term. Two individuals will have a one-year term initially, and then thereafter will be for two-year periods of time. So, we have, for the Affordable Housing Trust, we had six individuals apply. We had Brenda Brown at thirty-five Grafton Street. We had Hector Cruz at ten Baldwin Circle. We had Marla Leduey at thirty Washington Street. Beth Shay Bryant at thirty-nine Woodway Drive. Stephen Trotto at forty-one North Street. And Sanam Zaire at eight Jamie Lane. Colleagues, here's what I would propose for this. The other two, going forward, I'd just recommend the traditional nomination process. But given that we have six individuals for three offices, one of which will be two years, and two of which will be one year, I'd recommend that each one of us has gone through our own due diligence to select three individuals, that we go around the table to indicate who that we are supporting. We can give commentary as well and tally the votes. From there, we could find out, it could be as simple as we have three candidates immediately that will have sufficient votes to be appointed. And I would suggest that the one with the highest votes would get the two-year term with the second and third place individuals would get a one-year term. If there is a tie, either for the highest vote or for the third position, at that point, I'd recommend that we'd have a tiebreaker among the whole board. So, that is what I'm suggesting, rather than go through a nomination of one person at a time. There are fifteen total votes, so they'll be spread out. I think there's a limited number of people that can get a majority, and how I'd propose we do it. And if we could just go around the table, start with you, Mrs. Cassavant, if you don't mind.
Sure, that's fine. So, I did have an opportunity to speak to all six of the applicants. I found each of them to have qualifications that were in line with what we were looking for, for this position, for these positions, appointments. It's always challenging to choose, especially when you can't choose everyone. But in my discussions with people, I did have an opportunity to have some candidates say things. Sort of, so I asked the same four questions of everyone, but some candidates had responses that were just, made me feel like they were better suited for this role. So, I chose Hector Cruz as someone who I think has quite a bit of experience in this field with community development. He's had an experience living in affordable housing, which I think will lend itself well to success on this board. He has referenced an interest in running for town, he is a town meeting member, and he referenced voting for this at town meeting. And he is interested in educating people about what affordable housing is. He's retired, so he has the time to put towards this. But he is working in a consulting capacity in the community development field, in which he worked for, I think it was, I don't know, twenty or thirty years. So, that's my first choice. Second, I chose Beth Shay Bryant. Again, someone who is a town meeting member, served on the Commission on Disabilities for quite some time. I think that that will help to provide some insight for her in this role. She's very interested in looking at ways to improve housing for our seniors and our disabled people. She also had ideas about fixing up homes in the community, and she said something that I wrote down. She wrote that diversity is good for a town, and all incomes are good for a town, and that really stuck with me. And then, my third choice is Brenda Brown. Again, someone who has thirty-five years of experience in real estate. And my conversation with her, during that time, I was able to hear a lot of the ideas that she had about incorporating affordable housing into the community. She had a lot of strong ideas, and so that was why she was my third choice. But it was not easy to choose, I will say that.
Thank you. Mrs. Flynn?
So, I am making recommendations based on my review of the applications that were submitted. And I agree with Beth that it's really hard to choose, because I'm really grateful that these six individuals are willing to, you know, dedicate their time to this important initiative in our town. With that said, my three choices are Hector Cruz, Beth Shay Bryant, and Sanam Zaire.
Thank you. Mr. DiPaolo?
Well, I will say, I'm on the same, same three people as Ms. Cassavant. The reason that I focused on those folks is because, obviously, having somebody with housing background, particularly dealing with subsidized housing or public housing, I think is really important. I think it's important to have somebody who understands the real estate industry. And I also think that it's important to have somebody who's got social service experience, because I think that's all part of this mix. And I think those three people have that experience. And so, that is why I am recommending Brenda Brown, Hector Cruz, and Beth Shay Bryant.
Thank you. Mr. LeBeau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I similarly appreciate the fact that so many qualified individuals submitted letters of interest, and I reviewed them all. And my conclusions are, whom I support, somewhat similar to what several of my colleagues have said, and then possibly not. But I do believe Mr. Cruz has a great amount of background and experience that really qualifies him to be a member. Similar to what other members have said, I also support Ms. Bryant. And my third, well, among my three would be Stephen Trotto of North Street. I think Mr. Trotto provides a perspective of someone who's lived in the community for some time and offers a sense of that, which I think is important to this. But I think he also alluded to in his, in his, in his letter to how he would approach the job, and I agree with that sentiment. And though, obviously, we need some folks who have clear experience in, you know, in this area. I don't think every single individual has to be deeply rooted there. So, those would be my three choices.
Thank you. So, I had the opportunity, I did reach out to all of the candidates and had the opportunity to speak with five out of six. I appreciate everybody applying for this and patience for some who waited a longer time as we extended the date a while back to get additional folks. And I understand that it's summertime, so thank you, everybody, for applying. What I tried to do when I, when I spoke with people, I looked at the bylaws as drafted, what we were thinking through, the type of the responsibilities in the bylaws, together with trying to take different life experiences and skill sets, put them together, together with the designee from the board, as well as the manager and town manager, to really move this forward quickly. I think each and every candidate here has outstanding credentials. But I started off really asking everybody the same questions. It's related to vision for the role, which everyone put together a cover letter, but in their own words, what they were looking to do and what success would mean for them. Talked about some responsibilities or, you know, expertise related to management, development, financing, or regulatory related to housing generally. Some had those skills, some did not. That's not dispositive. Asked about board experience related to that. And then, I'd ask each and everyone three words that describe them, which is fascinating, because it's interesting. It's always tough to describe words for yourself on the spot when this is totally different than all the other questions that were asked. But each and every individual gave a very, very thoughtful response and would be a good candidate. Where I ended up, Hector Cruz, I think some tremendous experience here, and he has the management, development, regulatory, financing experience. Beth Shay Bryant, for reasons that have been spoken about earlier, as well as Stephen Trotto. Couple of years ago, when I was running for office, I had an opportunity to meet Mr. Trotto. He has an extraordinary record of giving back to his community. He's very familiar with the Shrewsbury area. He has lived here a long time, knows a lot of people, and knows the community well. So, that is Mr. Trotto. So, if I look at the votes, where we are, is we have Beth Shay Bryant and Hector Cruz with five each. And then, we have Brenda Brown and Stephen Trotto with two each, and Sanam Zaire with one vote. Is what I have. Did I get that tally right?
I have this one.
Okay. So, I think to, for a tiebreaker, it'd be really those two, between Brenda Brown and Mr. Trotto, among the five of us, to figure out with five of us here, a majority on that, who of these two candidates would be the third. And then, we'll go back to between Ms. Bryant and Mr. Cruz, who would have the two-year. So, we have sort of two tiebreakers. And then, from there, I think we could take them, resolutions. So, the first thing I'll put out there is we have Mr. Trotto and Ms. Brown tied at two each. What's thoughts on that?
Oh, we're doing it bottom up, okay.
Yeah, we're doing it bottom up. You know, so this will be for a one-year term, initially, with a two-year term thereafter.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, as I said before, I really think we need people who have familiarity with this area. So, are you looking for a motion?
Well, at this point, it's to figure out, we have a tie. So, it's to break the tie.
We have a tie, so are you looking for a motion to, on how we're breaking the tie? We're going to vote?
Well, it can be, I guess it can simply be a motion for one or the other and see the three that vote for it or out. That's fine.
Right. So...
And see if there's any discussion on those two. So, we know, obviously, that two have voted, one has voted for Ms. Zaire, and two have voted for Ms. Brown. And Mr. Trotto didn't know if there are any other comments before that motion or questions? If not, go right into motion.
I would move and someone can second.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, I move that we appoint Brenda Brown for the reasons I stated earlier.
Is there a second?
Second for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Have been moved and seconded. Any discussion or debate? Have been moved and seconded. And all those in favor say aye. Aye.
I'm changing my mind. I'm going to support Stephen Trotto, so I'm going to vote no.
Okay. So, I'm voting no?
No.
No.
Okay. So, one to four. And then, is there a motion for Mr. Trotto?
I move to appoint Stephen Trotto for a one-year term on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Have been moved and seconded. Any discussion or debate? There being none?
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
So, I voted for Ms. Brown. And now, we're doing another vote, so...
The other way, we could have done this?
No, no, no. That is what I mean. So, I can still vote?
Yes.
Well, I could vote yes, or I could vote.
No.
Okay.
You could still vote yes, but I mean, after that vote.
Okay. Because, just procedurally, so the only person, well, not necessarily, but Mr. Trotto is the person of those that had the two votes who's still standing at this point, so...
Right. So, having been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, that passes. So, Mr. Trotto has a one-year term. So, now, congratulations, Mr. Trotto, and thank you to the others. And now, we have Ms. Bryant and Mr. Cruz. Both tied at five.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, this comes down to, you know, the individual board members' review, evaluation, internal ranking. I'm very impressed with Mr. Cruz's credentials, and I would move that he be appointed to a two-year term.
A second. Have been moved and seconded. Any discussion or debate? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Just for the record, I think Ms. Bryant would be excellent as well. This is a one-year term, but after that, expectation would be for the two years thereafter. So, it's, I think we have three excellent appointments here, and I thank everybody for their time. So, we have...
Do we still need to vote on?
Ms. Bryant?
We still need to vote on?
Oh, sorry. Yep, sorry. Yep, you're right. For the one-year appointment, correct. I'm getting ahead of myself. I need my own scorecard.
And I move the board appoint Beth Shay Bryant to a one-year term on the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees.
Second.
Have been moved and seconded. Any discussion or debate? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So, now, I can say that, that we have three excellent appointments. Thank you again, everybody, for applying, for the time to speak with us. Really great credentials, and those that were not appointed, absolutely encourage looking at other opportunities with the town, because we would benefit highly from their involvement. So, that is item eleven. And then, item twelve, to review an act on the appointment of one member to the Shrewsbury Cultural Council to fill a term expiring February tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And if I may, before I open this up, what I'd recommend is both this and the zoning board of appeals, more traditional, we can have nominations on the floor, that's fine, instead of going through the process that we did with multiple applicants for multiple positions. The one thing for Shrewsbury Cultural Council that I just put out there now, we have three excellent candidates, and the incoming chair also suggested the possibility of expanding that board from seven to nine in the future. And that's something maybe we don't take up tonight, but is that something maybe we could take up in the future, Mr. Mizikar, technically, to expand that, given that all three were excellent? And we'd like to hear from the commission too, but it seemed that the general consensus among the commission as well to expand to include all three. So, that's something beyond tonight. But tonight, the case in hand is just to act on the appointment of one member. So, is there any, are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Cassavant?
I support the expansion of the Cultural Council to nine members. I know from reading correspondence from the chair, Sally Livedini, that that is something that she's looking to do. But I believe that for purposes of this evening, because they need to report their membership by September first, that we need to just make a decision on one. I'd like to nominate Lauren Bloomberg of forty-six Brook Street to fill the one-year term, or excuse me, fill the three-year term expiring February tenth, two thousand and twenty-four on the Shrewsbury Cultural Council.
Is there a second?
Second for purposes of discussion.
And then, before we go to vote, I should have read all three candidates as well, sorry. So, in addition to Lauren Bloomberg at forty-six Brook Street, we have Barbara Luby at fifty-one O'Donnell Avenue, and then Jane Siebels, is that it, at ninety-two School Street. So, those are the three individuals who have sought this position. So, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Okay. So, one, four. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
First of all, I'd just like to say, you know, I'm not discounting the request that the Cultural Council be increased, but I'd like some justification for the request.
Sure.
I mean, not, with all due respect, we would like to increase the membership to nine for the next cycle. I'd like to know why.
Sure.
And there very well may be good reason, but again, I mean, that just doesn't, doesn't tell me enough. You know, we have, we have, again, this comes down to individual boards' reactions to the documents in front of us. Actually, I was moved to support Barbara Lubie at 51 O'Donnell Ave for the Cultural Council position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, oh, sorry.
Okay, I've been moved in second. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
So three to two. So as a technical matter, we have three, four. It's Lubie. I don't think we need to go to the third one then, right? So if not, we have, she has been appointed, right? Or she was nominated. Has she been appointed?
She's appointed, I believe.
Okay, so she nominated and appointed. Got it, we're done with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, forgive me, board members, if I misstated the motion, and I should have made a nomination rather than an appointment. But I did hear three votes.
Yep, she nominated and appointed. Okay. Okay, so the next item is to review and act on the appointment of one member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a term expiring on March 31, 2022. There are four candidates. Ann Raffolo, 38, Old Colony Drive. We have Dale Schatzke, 64 Barnard Street, Millend Canetkar of 9 Whitehall Circle, and Philip Blumberg of 46 Brook Street. Any nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. DePaulo?
I nominate Ann Raffolo, 38, Old Colony Drive, and, well, I'll let that go, but if we have discussion, I'll bring up why.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or debate?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. DePaulo?
I think by far, although the other people, you know, have good credentials, but I just think Attorney Raffolo has a very strong background in this area. And as, as we've seen, particularly in the recent past, these things are getting more technical, and I think having somebody who understands the process and understands the law coming out of the gate would be very, very helpful. I know the chair has indicated to me, not, not specifically for Attorney Raffolo, but that, you know, they seem to have to refer to counsel more. And I'm not saying that she would be the counsel, but I think having somebody on the board who'll give clarification, or, yeah, I guess clarification's the right word, being able to explain it at a meeting could help a lot. And so that's why I feel strongly about Attorney Raffolo.
I've been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? So as a technical matter, should we appoint, we only nominated, I probably didn't get that 100% correct. We nominated, should have opened other nominees, so. She's the only one.
I have a little confusing process tonight. Usually, traditionally, and we don't have to do it the same way all the time, I understand that, but the interesting thing was, somebody made a motion to appoint, and we would vote on it.
So let's just, in consensus with that, let's, given that we've all nominated, only one nominee, let's do a motion to appoint to keep it simple. So is there a motion to appoint Ann Raffolo to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a term expiring March 31, 2022?
From?
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. And then, good. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. Needed a scorecard tonight. I had most of it down pat. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the request for the October 2021 special town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles dated August 5, 2021, from Mr. Bernard Cahill, Town Planner. We saw this last meeting. I think we just acknowledged it, but we did not take a vote, and that's why it's in front of us again. Any questions? Or, Mr. Mizikar, any thoughts, or it's just a technical vote to carry this forward, correct? With the planning board?
Yes. Chairman, I move the board place the articles requested by the Town Planner on the town, special town meeting warrant.
Second. I've been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review and act to authorize the chair to sign the Community Compact Cabinet Grant Application for the Best Practice Program, Mr. Mizikar. I'll give this a shot, and then turn it over to you if I miss something. But colleagues, this relates to the Strategic Planning RFP that's out there. There's a grant that could provide funding for that, and when not, it could be utilized over multiple periods. So that would authorize me to apply, to apply for this grant on behalf of the board, which would cover the cost of the RFP for the strategic planning, the community vision and strategic plan, right?
Do I have it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll talk about executive session momentarily. Now we are done with the formal part of the agenda. We'll go to correspondence, which is pretty light this evening. Number 18, email dated August 10, 2021, from John Wensky, 9 Browning Road, regarding request for proclamation for an Eagle Scout, so noted. Next item is email dated August 10, 2021, from Jeff Kelly, 9 Walnut Street, regarding parking on Julio Drive.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DePaulo?
Yes, I might. This is an issue that's been going on, on that street for quite a while. And, and if I remember correctly, part of the reason we were not acting, or the town was not acting, Engineering or whoever, or we weren't acting, was because there was a parking lot that was going to be built. But at the same time, they were, the problem continued, and unfortunately, the person who lived at this house at Julio Drive passed away in the middle of all of this. I didn't realize it, and I wondered why I lost contact with him, and then I found out several months later why. And it's, obviously, it's still an issue. And I really, and I had talked with DPW Director about this multiple times, and they were looking at it. I'd really like to see this come back up, because that street still has a lot of cars on it, and if you live on that road, it's difficult to find a place to park, and sometimes even to get out of your driveway.
So after this, Mr. Mizikar did drive in that area, reached out to DPW as well as Engineering, noting that improvement, there's room for improvement, and we'll come back with recommendations on that in light of that correspondence received. Thank you. So noted. Next item is email dated August 11, 2021, from James Nagin-Gast, 15 Wesleyan Street, regarding inquiry about Shrewsbury Mass climate change efforts. I owe him a response. I have materials from Mr. Baldinger, Selco, and other areas, and I can respond to him in a more fulsome manner. So that is a response that I still owe to him. Sorry for the delay on that. And the last item is an email dated August 12, 2021, from Stan Tronziak, 562 South Street, regarding left-hand turn on South Street. Actually, there were two parts of this correspondence. The first one related to the left-hand turn, which Mr. Mizikar responded to, as well as just questions about the recent override and the concern that individuals have in the community about taxes. We responded to him regarding the commitment that was made by the boards on the recent override, and he has acknowledged receipt of both of our responses. So noted. So that's it for the, all the items on the agenda. Are there anything else before I request a motion to go?
Did you mention the second part of that letter?
That was, yeah, the second part related to taxes and.
The first part?
Was left turn.
Right.
And about hours and the like.
And we're looking into that.
Yeah, we're looking into that, and the second part is related to taxes and concerns and I, instability. And I had responded, and we will, as part of that response, happy to share that with the board, just talked about the commitment that we made together with the school department as part of the override, dated March 16, for the May override vote. So if that, there is nothing else on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to go in executive session for the following reasons. Under general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property on 439 Lake Street. And second, under general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property, the former Beal School, 1-7 Maple Avenue. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 2, for the purposes listed on the agenda.
Second. I've been moved in second. In a roll call vote as required, Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
The board will now convene into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property. Furthermore, the board will not reconvene back into open session. Thank you for joining us, and good night.